Good evening and welcome to the Sacramento County Planning Commission's meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely. Members Devlin, Members Verga.
Here.
Members Corona Sabaniano, Members Borja.
Here.
And Chair Conklin.
Here.
Okay, with those members present, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And with that, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Clerk, would you mind starting the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I see that we have a pretty busy agenda tonight. First one is a swearing-in of the commissioners. I've been working with the vice chair and the director and staff to kind of help implement some new changes and provide some professional developments with the commissioners. And I know the public pledge that we uphold and faithfully perform is integral to that, so I appreciate the director for including this as an agenda item.
Is the mic on? There we go. Good morning or good afternoon, evening, commissioners. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to wait for Mr. Devlin, or I could do the swearing-in for Mr. Devlin and Commissioner Sabaniano at the next meeting?
I think in the interest of time, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay. Okay, so before you, you have your script. And if you could all say your name when I get to the statement where you're going to repeat after me, if you could say your name together at one time and then just follow me from there. Is that the... No. Okay. "On behalf of the county of Sacramento, I, Florence Evans, am hereby swearing-in the county of Sacramento Planning Commissioners. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statements after me." I... And then state your names.
Timothy Verga.
David Conklin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Repeat after me.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And you are hereby sworn in before me, Florence Evans, on this ninth day of 2025 of June.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
And Chair?
Yes.
I do need to read the announcement.
Please. You beat me to it.
The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed toward any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-public public comment, please complete the and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commissioners, members, and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and off-agenda, agenda item number to be sent as follow. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and mail a comment to 700 H Street, Suite 2050 at Sacramento County, Sacramento, California, 95814. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much, clerk. Will you please read the first item of our non-contested agenda?
Absolutely. Item number two is PLMP 2025-00030, Certificate of Nonconforming Use to the Planning Commission. This is located at 4301 Paradise Drive in the west side of the intersection of Paradise Drive and Talbert Court in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community, and the environmental document is exempt.
Thank you very much. And I believe we have a staff report for this evening?
We do. Thank you, Chair Conklin. Even though this item is a non-contested item, it is relatively new request for this item. I think Wendy Hartman is going to prepare you with a little bit of background as to why it's here.
All right. So as Todd mentioned, this is a certificate of nonconforming use by the Planning Commission referred to as an NCP to allow reinstatement of a nonconforming use. This change was recently adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 10th and took effect January 10th. And the reason we did this was that previously, a few of the county's special planning areas and neighborhood preservation areas had provisions that allowed for existing businesses that had become nonconforming through the adoption of an SPA or other zoning code amendment to be able to be reinstated in the event that they lost their nonconforming use. And so we decided when we came forward with the massage ordinance, we had some businesses that were struggling with this where the zoning code had changed, and we found out that they either could no longer operate in that zone district or needed to obtain a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors. So again, the most frequent reason for seeing a request such as this before you is because the zoning code has changed and the business in question has either allowed its business license to lapse or did not get an administrative-level certificate of nonconforming use in the time period specified in the zoning code. And so this is an opportunity for them to come back. And in some cases, a business, through various reasons, may not have been aware that their business license or their need for an NCS was required. So this just allows those businesses that have continued to operate to become legalized again and to allow them to apply for and receive approval of their business licenses. As the NCP process, which is the Certificate of Nonconforming Use from the Planning Commission, requires a public hearing process, including a recommendation from the CPACs and neighbor notification, it also provides an opportunity for the community and your commission to consider whether or not the business is operating in a manner that is consistent with that neighborhood, is not acting in a way that would be considered a public nuisance, and should be allowed to continue or not continue. And so tonight you're going to hear the first of these requests that we received. We do have another one that will be coming to your commission, I think, in the next month or two. And we have received a few other applications that have just recently been submitted. And if you don't have any questions for me on the NCP process, I will turn it over to Holly Gunn to give the presentation on this specific request.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions from the dais? No? All right, please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Holly Gunn, Assistant Planner with Planning and Environmental Review and Lead Planner for this project. The project site is located at 4301 Paradise Drive at the west side of the Paradise Drive and Talbert Court intersection in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. The parcel is currently developed with an outdoor recreation facility, which was developed in 1956. There is a typo on the slide. It's 1956 instead of 1965. The subject site is Zoned Residential 5, or RD5, and the surrounding parcels are also Zoned RD5 and are developed with single-family residences. The outdoor recreation facility was established in 1956 and became nonconforming in 1967 when a change to the zoning code resulted in the requirement of a use permit to the Planning Commission for recreation facilities. In 2018, the first business license was obtained, and it was determined by county council that an administrative certificate of nonconforming use would be required to be obtained by May 3rd, 2023. Prior to 2018, the business was not aware that a business license was required to operate. In 2024, the business license was up for renewal, and it was discovered that an NCS had not been obtained, and that resulted in the loss of the nonconforming status. As a result, a certificate of nonconforming use to the Planning Commission is required to reinstate the use. This is the site plan and the floor plan. The property is currently developed as is, and there are no changes to the proposed development as a part of this project. The Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC met on April 9th, 2025, and recommended approval of the requested entitlement for D0. One comment was received regarding impacts associated with large events such as swim meets, such as when swim meets are held at the event. Therefore, Condition 12 was added to the conditions of approval. This condition requires that the applicant contacts the sheriff's office for coordination for events over 100 attendees. The project is consistent with the general plan, community plan, and zoning code as conditioned. It is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses, and the environmental determination is exempt. Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the following: recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve the certificate of nonconforming use subject to the findings and conditions. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions. We also have the applicant team present to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? No? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to address the commission?
Sure.
All right. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, commission. My name is Lisa Mattis. I'm with Baker Williams Engineering Group. I also happen to be a member at Glen Oaks, and I was previously on the Board of Directors of Glen Oaks for many years. So when this came up, as Holly said, Glen Oaks was established in 1956. At that time, there were no houses around it. It was in the middle of nowhere. The first subdivision map recorded also happened to be named Glen Oaks, coincidentally. And this was recorded in 1960. And as subdivisions developed around the club, it's now completely surrounded, you know, of course, we're not RD5. So our members kept asking, why are we having to do this? I said, because we're not a house or, you know, a subdivision. So this is what we need to do. Glen Oaks provides another backyard. We joined because we didn't have a pool and didn't want to put one in. I think a lot of people in the neighborhood have done that, or they didn't have a tennis court or a pickleball court. And so it's another place to hang out. We provide places, a lot of elementary and middle schools have their end-of-year party because they can swim, play tennis, and barbecue, and, you know, play games and have all the fun they want. We always say that we think Glen Oaks is the happiest place in Carmichael. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the dais? Commissioners? No? I think we're good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other members of the public that would like to provide comments? Clerk?
We have no comments online.
All right. Looks like we'll bring it back to the dais if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the...
And as a...
Go ahead. No, just to move it.
Move the staff recommendation. As a former swim coach of Glen Oaks, some 26 years ago, I'm not sure I have to recuse myself, but provided that I don't, I'm happy to second that motion.
Wonderful. I hear a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borja?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
Verga?
Aye.
Chair Conklin?
Yes.
And that vote passes.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to item number three on our non-contested portion of the agenda. Clerk, would you please call?
Item number three is PLMP 2023-00084. It's a use permit, a development plan review, special development permit, and design review. The property is located at 7849 Stockton Boulevard in the South Sacramento community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you very much. Is there need for staff presentation? Any questions? Nope. Is there any... Is the applicant here?
We are presenting.
Did you want to address the commission, or are you...
I think in the interest of time, unless there's any specific questions to be addressed.
At the podium, if you'd like to make those comments.
Paul, this is David Hawes. On behalf of the applicant, we'll defer to the recommendations this evening in the interest of time, but if there's any specific questions, we're more than happy to entertain them.
Thank you very much. And are there any members of the public that would like to provide any comments? Clerk, anyone on the call?
I have no one online.
Online. Bring it back to the dais. Any comments, questions?
No.
I do have one quick question, Chair. Really appreciate it. To the applicant, thank you so much. Were there any considerations about coordinating with traffic on, if you guys are familiar with the area, you know, Stockton and LC, a majority of your trucks kind of go through Stockton Boulevard and kind of cut through right on Stockton and LC and just right past where Costco is. I don't think that there's going to be quite an extension or at least an increase of traffic, but was that a consideration that you guys might have had when applying? Some of your trucks are having a really tough time, or at least truck traffic's having a really tough time making that left northbound on Stockton Boulevard onto LC or MAC to get into the freeway.
Commissioner, I don't know that the specific issue was taken under consideration, only that we spent actually probably about six months with traffic to make sure that everything was vetted so that any potential concerns were addressed. And I believe that with the final conditions of approval, the way that they're set off, all of the department's concerns have been addressed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? No? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the item.
All right. Is there a second? 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 We have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borja?
Yes.
Devlin?
Yes.
Verga?
Aye.
Chair Conklin?
Yes.
All right, that vote passes. With the person...
Thank you very much. That brings us to item number three on our agenda under the non-contested items. Clerk, will you please call?
Item number four is...
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my mistake. Item number four. I'm not keeping track.
Item number four is PLMP 2023-00054. This is a rezone tentative parcel map and design review. It is located at the northeast intersection of Dillard Road and Sherman Lane in the Consumeness Community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you very much. Sir, request for staff presentation? Seeing none. Is the applicant here that would like to provide a few remarks?
Chair Conklin, members of the commission, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing Saw Vang and family. I just wanted to take a moment and say, first of all, we've read the staff report. We agree to all the conditions of approval. But more importantly, I'd like to thank our planner, your staff, Nate Doberneck, for a great job in guiding us through the process and making sure that we stayed on track. Just wanted to say thank you for his good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And are there any members of the public that wish to provide any comments? Not hearing any. Deferring to the clerk for anyone online?
I have no one online.
All right. Bring it back to the commission. Anyone on the dais? Final thoughts?
No.
No? All right. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to move the item and move the staff recommendation.
We've got a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Members Devlin?
Yes.
Members Verga?
Aye.
Members Borja?
Yes.
And Chair Conklin?
Yes.
That vote passes.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to item number five on our agenda under non-contested. Will the clerk please call the item?
Item number five is PLMP 2022-00144. It is a specific plan amendment, rezone, small lot tentative subdivision map, and design review. The property is located at 9994 Lauren Road in the Vineyard Community, and the environmental document is exempt.
Thank you very much. Is there a request for staff presentation? No? All right. Waiving that. Is the applicant here that wish to provide a few remarks?
Good evening. My name is Rick Langdon, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of the project. I too would like to thank Christopher Alberts for all his efforts in putting this together. It's been a long program, but we got there, and we're in agreement with the conditions and ready to move forward. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. If not, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Looks like Christopher Alberts is going to win some sort of award tonight.
He deserves it.
Is there any comments from the public? Not hearing any. Clerk, is there anyone online?
I have no public comments online.
All right. Bring it back to the dais for any closing thoughts, comments? Not hearing any. Entertaining a motion?
I'd like to move staff recommendation, Chair.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Members Verga?
Aye.
Members Devlin?
Yes.
Members Borja?
Yes.
And Chair Conklin?
Yes.
That vote passes.
All right. We're making record time. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number six on our agenda under the contested portion. Clerk, will you please call the item?
Item number six is PLMP 2023-00002. This is a tentative subdivision map, special development permit, and design review. The property is located at 8840 Phoenix Avenue, approximately 776 feet west of the intersection of Hazel Avenue and Phoenix Avenue in the Fair Oaks community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
All right. And we have staff for presentation? Please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Conklin, planning commissioners. My name is Christian Balthazar. I'm an associate planner with Planning and Environmental Review and Lead Planner for this item. The subject site is located at 8840 Phoenix Avenue in the Fair Oaks community. The project site consists of two parcels totaling 3.54 acres, which are currently, which currently contain two abandoned single-family structures and a shed on site. According to Sacramento County records, the structures were constructed around 1939. The subject site is Zoned Residential Density 3, or RD3, and surrounding area is developed with single-family residential homes, also Zoned RD3 in all directions, as well as RD2 Zoned to the south. On January 5th of 2021, this project was presented to the Fair Oaks CPAC as an early workshop item. During this meeting, the applicant provided the CPAC and members of the public with various site layouts. At this time, members of the public expressed their support for a private road ending in a cul-de-sac rather than a connection of the existing private road to Lena Way on the south side of the project site. So just for clarification, there was proposed, there was a few site layouts, one of which included connecting Phoenix Avenue all the way through to Lena Way to the south. However, during that meeting, the overall favorite layout was the cul-de-sac design that is being brought forward today. Since this was an early workshop item, at that time, there was no formal recommendation made. Staff also reviewed recent code enforcement cases and violations and has concluded there are no active cases at this time. The entitlements requested include a tentative subdivision map to divide or to allow the division of the two parcels into 10 residential lots, a special development permit to allow the proposed project to deviate from public street frontage standards, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with county-wide design guidelines. On screen now is the proposed tentative subdivision map. And once again, looking to divide 3.54 acres into 10 residential lots. The project proposes a private cul-de-sac that will serve all 10 proposed lots, which is the current request under the special development permit. All existing structures currently on site are proposed to be removed, and at this time, there's no development proposed. So future building footprints and setbacks will be evaluated during the building permit stages of the development. The project was also conditioned by county engineering side improvements and permitting section to require the construction of Class A frontage street improvements along Phoenix Avenue. So for perspective, Phoenix Avenue is on the north side of the map, which is left side of the screen here. So Class A improvements would be required for that portion of the map. And that includes curb, gutter, and sidewalk. This is condition number 23 in Attachment 2 of your hearing packets. Along with that, Sacramento County Environmental Management Department also conditioned the project to require all lots be connected to public water and sewer. And this was condition 66 and 67 in Attachment 2 of your packets. Here we have the preliminary grading and drainage plan for the site. On June 20th, 2023, the Department of Water Resources approved a Level 3 drainage study for this site. The drainage study included the plans that are shown on screen here, which show how drainage on site would be handled. Given, we did receive a couple comments regarding the drainage on site, do a quick explanation of how the plans propose to divert overland release. So on screen now, the plans show two stormwater detention basins, one running through the east side of the map, and that's shown towards the top portion of the screen here along parcels or lots 10, 9, and 8. This detention basin is proposed to capture the runoff from lots 7 through 10. And then there's also a second detention basin that's proposed on the bottom portion of the map, which is going to be the west side along the west boundary line of proposed Lot 5. And that's intended to capture runoff from lots 6, 5, 4, and 3. Along with that, you'll also see a green outline along some of the property lines. Those are proposed swales that are intended to capture the runoff on each lot and divert it into the corresponding detention basins proposed for the site. Along with this, the remaining stormwater on proposed lots 1 and 2 is proposed to drain to the private drive through a V ditch and then run through to the public street of Phoenix Avenue. Additionally, the Department of Water Resources also conditioned the project to require a Level 4 drainage study prior to the improvement or prior to improvement or grading plans in middle, and these are captured as conditions 57 through 59 of your Attachment 2. On screen now, we also have the project's tree exhibit, which shows a total of 103 trees on site. The proposed project would result in the removal of 37 of the 103 trees. Many of these trees are proposed for removal in order to develop the private drive that's shown on the center of the screen. 13 of these trees to be removed are protected oaks, all of which were rated either in poor condition with major structure and health problems or fair condition with minor problems per the provided Arborist report. The remaining 24 non-native trees proposed for removal do not meet the definition of a protected tree. However, they do comprise as non-native tree canopy. So there are mitigation measures that have been conditioned to the project to mitigate the removal of both native trees on site as well as replacement of any lost non-native tree canopy. The environmental, or the project had an initial study mitigated negative declaration that was prepared and was released for public review on January 10th of 2025. The document discusses the topics listed on the slide and concludes that the project would result in less than significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. The Fair Oaks CPAC met in February 7th of 2024 to hear and consider this project. Two members of the public provided in-person comments. One of the comments asked the project, asked for the project to incorporate sidewalks and to ensure pedestrian safety. The other commenter expressed privacy concerns on the southern side of the project site, specifically along proposed Lot 6. CPAC members stated that they did not have any major concerns with the requested entitlements and felt indifferent about the request for sidewalks, but did suggest that the applicant exchange informations with the neighbor to the south to work out possible solutions to the neighbor's privacy concerns. One of the suggestions accused potentially planting additional trees along that shared property line to the south. Following deliberation, the CPAC voted unanimously to recommend the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements. Additionally, the proposed project was reviewed by the designer... Additionally, the proposed project was reviewed by the Design Review Advisory Committee, or DRAC, and that happened on March 28th of 2024. The DRAC members initially expressed concerns with proposed private drive ending in a cul-de-sac as opposed to a public street connection through Lena Way. However, given the project had been taken to the Fair Oaks CPAC both as an early workshop item and then also as an item that was recommended on earlier that year, and there was extensive conversations with the applicant that they've had with the planning department regarding this layout, DRAC members were agreeable to the approach of the private road ending in cul-de-sac. Additionally, DRAC members also expressed concerns with the large elevation changes across the site and stated that either large amounts of grading would need to be done or retaining walls would be needed for future development. Following deliberations, the DRAC recommended the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines, provided that any of the 10 lots requiring retaining walls due to grading issues will need to come back to the planning department for a staff-level design review approved by the design review administrator. That's recommend, that recommendation has been added as condition number eight of your attachment two in your hearing packets. Following staff's review, it was determined that the proposed tentative subdivision map will create parcels similar in size to that of the surrounding area and would be creating more housing opportunities. Additionally, the findings can be made to support the deviation requested as part of the special development permit, and the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, the community plan, and the zoning code. The environmental document also concluded that there would be no significant environmental concerns, and the project was supported by both the CPAC and the DRAC. Planning environmental review staff recommends the planning commission take the following actions: determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete and adopt a mitigated negative declaration; adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program; approve the tentative subdivision map and special development permit subject to findings and conditions; and find the project in substantial compliance with county-wide design guidelines, also subject to findings and conditions. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. I am available to answer any questions, and we do also have the applicant team in press and answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, sir, for a wonderful presentation. Really appreciate it. If you could just go back to the slide where there are the maps. Yeah, I think that'd be, that'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate it. So we, we did receive a comment and a couple of comments regarding lot 6, both concerns regarding the construction staging area as well as the privacy and potential access to, to and from Lena Way. Is that something that was considered in the application process and any of the conditions related to that construction and ensuring that the community, I think that would be south of this project closer to Lena Way, all of their concerns could potentially be addressed or mitigated?
Yeah, so currently, as it stands today, at the end of Lena Way on the south side of the project, there is a white barricade calling out a dead-end road. There are also requirements from the zoning code requiring solid wood fencing for residential homes adjacent to other residential. However, if, if the planning commission wishes to add a condition to further change the type of fencing that would be required, that would be something that we would be able to accommodate with agreement from the applicant team.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Related to that, there is some concern about the parking of RVs and boats on nearby streets. Are currently residents allowed to park a boat or RV on the street?
So currently, at least four directly across the frontage area of the project site along Phoenix Avenue, there is no curb, gutter, and sidewalk constructed. It is currently unimproved with a dirt-side road, right? Generally, I don't believe that there would be an allowance to park an RV or boat off of your property on, on the street.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. There isn't any planned, other than getting this set up for residential, there's no building builder with a plan to build or anything at this point yet, right?
That's correct. Today, the request is just for the subdivision of the land. A future request to develop the parcel would come through building permits. Our zoning code doesn't require a subsequent design review if it's 20, I believe it's 20 houses or less for a subdivision.
So there would be no further review beyond the review of the actual planning?
That's correct. Unless there were deviations being requested for the proposed development of the homes, then there would be a subsequent need for, for, for the review as a discretionary entitlement.
Thank you.
All right. I think the other commissioners tagged my question, so I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And do we have the applicant here?
Yes, we're here.
Wonderful. Would you like to provide the, the commission with some remarks?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. We've, want to thank the team that worked with us extensively. As you see, there's a lot of conditions that we went through. We're in agreement with, with what's on there. So we'd like for you guys to support our project.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? I had a quick question, if I may. There's been some concerns raised by, it sounds like some, some letters we've received and have been surfaced by my, my colleagues here related to the northeast and southwest drainage and, and those abutting or adjacent homes that are, are connecting and at least in that kind of spillway zone. How are those drainage and, and sways going to be maintained and ensure that they capture the intended drainage and so there isn't spillover into the residents that share that area?
Yeah, there's, the drainage plan that was submitted is just a preliminary plan. There'll be an additional stage two drainage plan that'll be also submitted and reviewed to ensure that everything is in compliance.
Okay. And then it was highlighted before that some residents like to see the construction of some sort of physical barrier fence to restrict public access from the project from Lena Way. Is that something that you're, have plans to address? What are, what's your feedback to that?
Yeah. The, the way that the plan is designed, the logical conclusion is that there'll be a solid fence that's going to be somebody's backyard. Nobody's going to want to have vehicles shining their lights and driving in there to keep it open. So I think that that's just like a simple logical understanding that there'll, there'll be some form of fencing that will be there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does to me. Thank you very much.
Is that it? Any other questions?
Any other questions from the dais? No, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. We do have a request to you guys. Fair Oaks typically is a rural area. There's not, people don't really like curb, gutter sidewalks in this area. There was a, another parcel map that was a small subdivision that was built probably a couple hundred feet from here. They allowed a deferral from having to, to not install the frontage improvements. We'd like to request that the little portion of sidewalk that is required is going to be more of an eyesore and inconsistent with this area. So we'd like to request that you guys provide an option for us to, to do a deferral agreement to not have to do those frontage improvements. And when, when we were at CPAC, it was kind of, some people were for the idea, some of them were against it. But, you know, in this situation, there's just like this little small portion of sidewalk that's going to be sticking out protruding out that I don't think would be safe for this area and in reality would be kind of a nice or wouldn't be consistent. So a deferral, are you guys familiar with what a deferral is?
Yeah, I'm just not a big fan of, of redrawing projects from the dais, so I'm going to look to staff for what conversations there have been in this area, if any.
Hey, good evening. So there was prior meetings with the site improvements and permitting section, SIPs, regarding this topic of potentially not requiring the Class A, which covers curb, gutter, and sidewalk, but doing a Class C instead. That request itself was something that SIPs was not willing to come, to, to come to a compromise with. They're stating that there is Class A improvements directly to the north and directly to the south of the project. So therefore, they, they basically said no to changing from Class A to Class C. However, in terms of the, there was no previous discussion with SIPs to see if they were in agreement or okay with entering into a deferred improvement agreement with the applicant. From my understanding from that meeting, SIPs was very clear that they did want to have those Class A improvements at very least on the frontage of the site along Phoenix Avenue.
Okay. So the request is to amend the application to include a deferred improvement?
It would just be adding it in as an option so that we can then work with SIPs to see if we can get a deferral, but at least if we can put that in as an option for the condition.
Look to my counsel here for how that would be worded or...
Sorry. They're asking to change the condition. I just want to be clear. Are we just talking about the segment on Phoenix Avenue?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Are, is there full Class A required up and down the cul-de-sac?
No.
No, what's that going to be?
That's a private road.
It's a private road.
So is there any requirement?
There's no requirements in terms of, for any, sorry, staff.
Not for sidewalk.
But curb, gutter?
No, the, the requirement from SIPs was to defer to Sac Metro Fire District, which was just the, they just determined the proposed width, which is minimum of 20 feet, and pavement able to sustain over 80,000 tons for their, for their trucks to be able to maneuver in and out of the private road, but no curb, gutter, sidewalk.
Okay. So, you know, what SIPs is going to look at, what they already have looked at, it sounds like, is they usually would only grant a deferral. And this is Phoenix Avenue, I think actually this way, so it runs west-east, correct? So they're going to look at, you know, the parcels to the west and east and see if they've already developed with sidewalks or not. And if it's, you know, logical, if they already have, they already have Class A on one or both sides, it's logical to have this segment filled in. That's kind of how we do it in a piecemeal fashion. Now, if you look on both, either side of that front lot, one of this subdivision, and there's, there's no sidewalks or curb, gutter on either side for some distance, then that might make sense to grant a deferral. And I don't know what the situation is in terms of are there sidewalks or not, but I, I will say this, in terms of what granting a deferral is, it basically functions like a waiver. Once that deferral gets recorded, it's, I mean, I've rarely seen them called in and actually completed. You know, it's, the properties get sold off, the new owners don't even realize it's there. That's just, that's just, you know, candidly, how those normally work out. And that we've got deferred sidewalk improvement agreements or frontage improvement agreements that, you know, are 40 years old, it's never been called in. But anyway, in terms of procedure, all he's asking you, and you can decide if you want, obviously, you decide if you want to allow it or not, is to amend the condition, which calls for Class A. And you can do that here. It's not, it's, it's not going to require a redesign of the map or anything.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any questions from the dais regarding this potential change?
Yeah, I have. You're saying you don't want to put the Class A in along that road. The question that basically I'm not familiar with is, is there curb, cutters, sidewalks on the opposite sides of those parcels now?
I don't think so, no. There's, yeah, there's nothing that's not on the opposite side. There's, there's some down the street.
How far down the street?
You know, I don't have...
There's a few sections.
300 feet west and about 200 feet east.
And they're in front of houses, existing homes now?
There are single-family houses over there.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if there's a longer portion, it kind of makes sense because it provides off-street parking and widens the road and whatnot. When you have a section that's short like this, it's just, it's going to be, you know, this little...
I think I can visualize this.
Yeah.
I think the planning director wanted to...
I just wanted to provide a little bit more specifics to your request, Commissioner Verga. Todd Smith, planning director. On the south side of Phoenix Avenue, the closest sidewalk to the west is roughly 246 feet away. That is two parcels to the east of what is Arbor D Drive, excuse me. And to the east, it's quite a bit further away, at least based on Google Maps imagery. You have to go all the way to, it looks like Hazel, where you can see some existing sidewalks to the east. On the north side of Phoenix Avenue along this frontage, there are no existing sidewalks that run the entire stretch from those two, same two intersection points.
And then could you check how far those four parcels are away? The ones that were newly developed there, I want to say it's probably been a couple of years. They would be on the north side of the property. They're kind of infill lots. I want to say they're also a couple hundred feet away on the north side. They pack up to the shopping center there.
Immediately to the north?
It's, yeah.
Yeah, they're right across the street. So there, there is a project to the north that's immediately to the north of this project. Its lotting pattern is just directly north.
Yeah, and they were recently developed, brand-new homes. So it's just, you know, it wouldn't make sense that we would have to do them if, if they were literally, oh, yeah. I didn't realize they were right across the street, they're right across the street there.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to testify? I do have a form here for Tom Zloutz, Zlotsky?
Zlotkowski.
I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Tom Zlotkowski. I, 50/40 Lena Way. So I am the person, I think, who you were referring to, who did submit comments. I'm, I'm not aware of other comments from adjacent neighbors, but I did submit some comments today. I am the property owner to the south on the RT2 lot that also has frontage on Lena Way and is right up to the barricade, which is the south property line of the project. So, yeah, I, I submitted a number of comments, and I don't know if you want me to read them. I never try to read comments again because I'm sure you've, you've already done that, so I could just highlight them.
I think a quick summarization would be great.
Okay, that would be fine. So I'm a, I'm a registered civil engineer, and so I have a pretty good understanding of the complexity of developing this property. And I do appreciate the applicant working with the community. The fact that I'm the only one here is a testament to the fact that I think most of the property owners on Lena Way and Velocampo Drive are happy with the cul-de-sac configuration off of Phoenix. The one thing that I, I did bring up at the planning commission, I'm sorry, at the Fair Oaks CPAC last year was the lot 6 issue. And that touches off, that's the start of, of the comments that I made today and wrote them down. As was stated by Kristen, Christian, I was under the impression that we'd have some conversation with the applicant regarding some of my concerns about the buildability of that lot, the, the configuration, the elevation, and just the overall setback. And now the understanding that, you know, the drainage swale, that's a requirement... understanding that, you know, the drainage swale, that's a requirement for developing the property, will also impact the overall availability of a backyard on that Lot 6, which would be my shared property line. So since we have not really gotten anywhere with the applicant with regard to a conversation on what could be done to help mitigate that, I'm suggesting that Lot 6 perhaps could have its own additional review by the zoning code administrator or the improvement plan director of SIPs, to make sure that some of my concerns about privacy and about setbacks are addressed. And that, you know, I, I don't wind up with somebody overlooking the property that has been, you know, very private to us over all these years. I've been there since 1994, built the property out in 1994, and we've enjoyed having that the way it is, always recognizing it was gonna develop. So I'm not here to say it can't be developed. I've had enough experience with those types of conversations to recognize, you know, everybody has a right to develop the property. But I think considerations of, you know, our longevity at the property and the fact that there could be some other mitigations perhaps performed to allow us a little bit more privacy than just the 25-foot setback that is currently shown on the map. So if the, if the council, if the commission could consider some type of additional review of that individual lot, once that building permit is submitted with regard to reduction in size of the property, or, you know, not allowing decks, if it is a second-story property, and just how high that property will, that building footprint would be, because it is sloping down, and I have a retaining wall on my property that makes our existing building pad even lower. So we're gonna be sitting there looking at something that could be quite high, and I'd like some consideration by the county to try to mitigate that impact as much as possible if we're not gonna get anywhere with reducing or making any changes to the lotting pattern.
Okay. So, I mean, just so I understand, the final approval for this item is the planning commission, correct?
For the map.
Yeah, for the map. So, I mean, we could, there's always, I'd love to see the conversation between you and the applicant occur. We can, I presume, I mean, we can either move forward with this application as it is or with conditions. I don't know how we would set any conditions based upon conversations, though, unless we reschedule this agenda item for a future hearing to facilitate those conversations. I don't know if the applicant's willing to entertain that.
Right. Well, that's not my, that's not for me to answer. My suggestion was to perhaps put a note on the map, on the map that you may be approving tonight, that would require additional inspection or additional review of the particulars of this site, the building, actual building footprint of this site, once it is ready to be constructed, or once it's ready to be built on. That would allow the map to at least proceed, and would give me a sense that, you know, we'll have a little bit more conversation, or maybe even be able to talk through some of my concerns about, you know, height and intrusion and so on. That was my suggestion. It's, I don't know if council would agree to that, or I don't even, I've, I've seen that done in the past when I was in transportation. We could, we could, you know, put a note on a map that says Building 6, Lot 6 requires additional review for building permits above and beyond the normal. But that would have to be wording that, you know, you would entertain.
Chair Conklin, over here.
Yes.
Yeah. Kimber Gutierrez with Planning and Environmental Review. We do have Condition 8, which is, prior to issuance of a building permit, all resultant parcels that propose a retaining wall shall be subject to a non-discretionary design review to assess the home design and sighting. So that was a condition that was proposed and recommended by the Design Review Advisory Committee. So we do have, depending on how the grading is planned, any lots that will require a retaining wall will be required to come back through a staff-level design review. We could amend the condition to specifically add Lot 6, if that is something that the commission is in favor of or wanting to do. But to note, the non-discretion design review is not something that is circulated for public review, so it would be a staff-level review instead.
Are you satisfied with a staff-level review?
If the staff-level review is, brings forward specific considerations or concerns that I've, I've presented today, yes, I would be fine with that. It allows the map to keep going. But if it's just gonna be a review consistent with, you know, a building permit process that's done as a, as a party to the development plan review, no. I mean, I don't think that's gonna hit the mark. I think that leaves a little bit to be desired, because it's just gonna be a standard review without anybody recognizing that, that I've come here with my concerns over the, over that lot. So...
Well, I'd like to at least hear from the applicant, their response, if that's...
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Do you want to do that now, or do you want me to finish my presentation?
Let me, let me work, well, I've already afforded you about six minutes or so, so we normally do three minutes. I'm gonna open it up for the rest of the public. I'd like the applicant to respond.
Okay.
But...
Well, just to say, I have some clarifications with regard to the, to the discussion amongst the commissioners with regard to the access and the parking and all that. I could bring those forward to, if you would like more clarification on that. If not, I'll, you know, respectfully sit down.
If you have items to provide to the clerk to distribute to us, that's fine. We're happy to take those. But I'm gonna move forward, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just want to also shout out, give a shout out to Christian. He did a great job. He's been very helpful to, to me, and I'm sure is a good planner.
All right, thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to provide any comments?
Okay. So... I'm Ann Cedric. I am the applicant, and...
I'm sorry, we're just looking for other members of the public at this moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said the applicant was to come out.
I'm just looking for other members of the public at the moment, if there are any.
I didn't know you came up.
I wouldn't travel too far.
Does anybody jump in?
My, I don't see any, any online.
I have no public comments online.
Okay. Well, now have rebuttal by the applicant.
Okay. So I'm Ann Cedric. I didn't know my husband walked up as well. This is Joseph Maroney, my husband. So we are the applicants. And with regard to the drainage there, this, I understand that a lot of the drainage requirements are new. I think we're one of the earlier subdivision area to be having to comply with all these new regulations with retention ponds, et cetera, which our engineer has been working on, and complying with everything that's been asked of in order to collect the water, direct the water, so that there isn't a problem in the surrounding area. And so we don't believe that there will be a problem there. I think somebody asked questions about how these ponds were going to be, or drainage retention areas were going to be maintained, et cetera. I think it's all going to be prescribed by county planning or utility people that are going to determine how, in fact, it's built and maintained. So of course, that will all be complied with in the process of developing. As to the homes that will eventually go in there, we're not obviously at the point where any homes are being designed yet. So it's too early to say how any home might be built, or what homes should be built on which lots. But it's our intention, whether we build the homes or somebody else builds them, that they would all be built to suit the neighborhood, in consideration of all the existing homes, all of the lots back up to other homes in the neighborhood. It's, it's an infill court, so there's surrounding homes all around the area, RD3 and RD2 zoning. So the intention is to take into consideration all of the surrounding homes, so that everybody ends up with a beautiful enhancement to their area, and that will not in any way undermine their enjoyment of their own properties. So if anybody, individual, like the gentleman that just spoke, of course, we would be very considerate in working with him when we get to the point of making plans, but we're not there to where we're doing that yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Do we have any other, do we have any questions?
I would like to add something.
Very briefly.
When we first purchased this, probably several years ago now, it's probably 20.
20.
Yes, it's been a long time. I had people attend, you know, cut the grass down, keep the fire danger down, and all this every year, like clockwork. I had a row of oak trees adjacent to Tom's property, good-sized oaks. And some point, someone had gone in there and chopped them all down. And that was the barrier for his property and mine. These were natural growing oaks that were pretty good size. I'm not sure exactly how big they were, but all I know is that when my guy went back there to cut the grass, there was a big pile of brush about 50 feet from his property line on my property. And Tom was making conversation with me. He says, "Tom, what happened to my trees?" And he looked at me, of course, he admitted that he took them down. And it was, it was like, "Why didn't you just call me? What'd you take them down for?" Well, they were too close to my garage. So there's been a contest of minds back and forth over the years, and this is what's happened. He asked me recently, about a year ago, if we could only put a single-story house there, because he doesn't want anybody to look in his backyard. Now, he has a steel fence.
I'm gonna be closing public comment here in a second.
Yes, but anyway, this is...
Well, it's not a public comment. This is the applicant's rebuttal, so...
This is just the history.
Okay.
I'll close it up now.
All right.
But that's the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna bring it back to the dais for any deliberation.
Chairman. Yes. I just have some questions in terms of what we just heard about modifying what the staff have worked out in terms of the plot as it sets up now, especially with no planning in terms of what is gonna be built. You talked about one section that could deal with any concerns down the road of how the houses are in place. That's not a, something that is done publicly, or does it involve anybody other than staff?
No, it does not. It's non-discretionary, so it is done at a staff level, and would be just reviewed by our design review administrator, our landscape architect, and our design review planner.
When you, when the staff does the review, would they be talking to anybody other than just looking at the documents?
With the applicant, and they'd be reviewing the documents against our countywide design guidelines, our, and our zoning code.
And having conversations with the applicant?
No, because it's non-discretionary, so it's not open to the public.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, what would be the process to give them a waiver about the Class A sidewalks and gutters, if we were to choose to do that here?
So my understanding, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but that in Title 22, there are allowances for requests for an exception. So the applicant can request that an exception from a standard be granted, and the advisory agency shall not grant the exception unless a reasonable justification is made by the applicant to support the action. So that is my understanding, is that they can come and request this, but it is up to the commission to grant it.
Okay. But in terms of their, I'm understanding they requested it.
Yeah, it was just, the condition right now, I'm assuming, says install Class A improvements. That's gonna be deleted. In its place, it's gonna say, enter into a deferred frontage improvement agreement with the county.
And that's just something we would basically have staff do as a result of our discussions and vote?
Yeah. They, they would sign the agreement before the final map is, can be approved.
Okay.
So can I, can I offer something on the, this discussion about any kind of deliberation
Sure.
What I heard was a request for, it sounded like a discretionary kind of look at the relationship between Lot 6 and the adjoining parcel. So those kinds of concerns are concerns which, there's nothing stopping you from entertaining, you know, those concerns right now. And to the extent they do require discretion, it should be you. All that, I mean, you can't delegate your discretionary power after you've taken action on this. So the non-discretionary review that staff was talking about, and that's gotta be limited to a decision made, and Kimber explained this, it's gonna be based on standards that are already in place, published, probably, I mean, mostly quantitative, maybe some qualitative standards, but there's not a lot of discretion there. And from what I heard from the neighbor was, he was wanting to have a whole discussion about different considerations and maybe having, you know, the parties be involved. That's something that should, that can and should happen here. There's nothing to stop the planning commission from considering those, those issues right now. And if that requires a continuance, it can be continued. If that requires, at the next meeting, having SIPs show up or Water Resources to talk about drainage, or whatever it is, we, you can and should do that.
I'd have a follow-up. Unrelated to the Lot 6 requirement, for the request for a deferral, for a request for the deferral of the Class A sidewalk, I mean, this is also for Todd, but have we ever required a, like a posting of a bond? I mean, to the point of like, having to go and then get money out of somebody now because the adjacent parcel's coming forward, and we're gonna make them do it, because now that one triggers that one. So, but now we gotta go get money from this other person who, you know, may have sold the property or done something else. I mean, have we ever required the posting of a bond to fund that improvement?
For a deferred street frontage improvement agreement, usually the timeline is so far off. You know, it's not like a three-year, three years and you have to install. I mean, this can be, sometimes they're just indefinite. So I don't think there's a bond requirement that goes along with those. We do, I mean, we would have a bond requirement for a subdivision improvement agreement. That's not what we're talking about here. And there's, there are front, there are different varieties of these, but for a deferred improvement agreement, it's just a contract, really, that gets recorded in the chain of title for this property, and it's gonna allow the county, you know, 10 years from now, to find out who owns, really, Lot 1, and say, "Guess what? You've gotta install sidewalks here."
And, and that contract is recorded on the, on the deed?
Yeah, it would be recorded over, so the existing APN. So it's gonna, it should go in, theoretically, should go in the chain of title for all 10 of these lots.
Theoretically.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a question, but I'm just ready for deliberation. I think, I think thank you for, for the staff pointing out Section 8, and there's also language on Section 22, and so not really a question, but I'm not sure if this is the time for us to, to discuss. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with their neighbors, and from the words that I heard from the applicant about, you know, making sure that this is, you know, the appropriate, at least, setting. But I do think that, you know, modifying Section 8, not just to add another level of bureaucracy, but really adding a relevant level of review. It's not just item number, or Lot Number 6 that would have retaining walls. I mean, you have retaining walls on 10, 9, and 8 adjoining other properties, one of which includes, you know, senior housing that's just around the neighborhood. And so just because those applicants are not here right now to, to voice your opinions, doesn't mean that they may not be willing to engage with the applicants when the actual builders are ready to construct. And so, and... ready to construct. And so in consideration, I know I'm not supposed to look at both the requests, but I think we can make both requests happen, which is, I'm willing to waive the section of the Class A for, I think that's plot number one, but also would like to request the rest of my colleagues to consider modifying language on Number Eight that Ms. Gutierrez had, had shared, which would essentially alter that it's not just a non-discretionary review and perhaps a different review in the future. And I'm looking at county council whether or not-
What are you, so again, you can't delegate your discretionary power. So whatever review is going to happen after this is going to be very limited. So I'd have to hear what you're proposing for that condition.
Okay.
But this, this exercise of considering the impacts created by this subdivision and considering, you know, public testimony, that, that needs to happen here.
I understand.
They're not going to have the same latitude to make a decision after you've approved the tentative map.
I understand, council. It's just that we don't have, we don't have designs for homes right now. Hypothetically speaking, I don't know whether or not it's going to-
You can still create, you can impose parameter restrictions on future development without knowing what the footprint of a house is going to be. Like, for example, if you, if there was justification for doing so, you could change the setback, the side yard setback, the backyard setback. That's just, I'm not saying you should here at all, I'm just saying that's, that's an example. You can do things. You can, you could hypothetically reduce, require a reduced footprint, limit the house to one story, things like that. You can do that without knowing right now what the proposed homes are going to look like. I'm not saying you should do any of that at all right now, I'm just saying that can be done.
And forgive me for an ignorant question, but let's say we were to amend Condition Number Eight, which says right now, prior to issuance of a building permit, all resultant parcels that propose a retaining wall shall be subject to a non-discretionary design review and strike non-discretionary design review, but provide that it's a review by the planning commission in the future. Is that an appropriate change?
No, it's not. It's got to be non-discretionary.
Why would have to be?
Cannot delegate what your authority is here to staff.
Okay.
So if we're into deliberations, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the reasoning for the rule behind not putting staff in the crosshairs of that kind of a dispute between the people and the applicant. I kind of agree with what you're saying about the Class A sidewalks. And at this point, I think it's just, we leave it to the staff to deal with that when they actually have a plan on the houses. And leave it to the applicant to work with the neighbor as to what kind of house is put in that area, since there is no plans for houses now in terms of what they're going to look like. We could be going through a lot of this for nothing if the applicant decides, "I'll put a single story home in that spot." So I think we just, in my opinion, based on what you were talking about, I'd like to see the sidewalk thing be deferred or waived, and then we just move the rest of the, with the rest of the recommendations from staff.
Planning Director Smith, do all non-discretionary design review, does that just occur in the planning department? Do SIPs get involved? What is the, what is the process for that?
Non-discretionary design reviews are always done at the staff level, design review administrator or subordinate staff. We typically do not go through any public outreach on those because they are simply, as Kimber indicated, verifying compliance with the adopted development standards, depending on the circumstances, residential in this case.
So they just make sure it complies with the standards?
Correct.
They don't get to deviate from that?
So they're ministerial on purpose, very deliberately, because we are simply checking that the proposed development meets the countywide development standards that have been adopted. And if I may add one more thing to what council has said, one of the things that the board has directed us to do as staff is remove or minimize barriers to housing production across all income levels.
Correct. So Mr. Chairman, I just assumed, if it's okay with everybody here, to make the motion that we move this item with the amendments by staff and a deferral of the sidewalk, Class A sidewalk.
So it'd be an amendment, your motion is an amendment with the condition of granting a deferral?
Of the Class A sidewalk, yes.
Okay. And that is it?
That's it. Move the, move it forward as it is now.
Is there a second?
Well, if we could, if I could maybe jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And perhaps you might be open to a friendly amendment here.
There's been no second yet.
A substitute.
There's been no second yet.
Oh, there's been no-
Nothing to amend.
I'm not in support of any sort of waiver for the sidewalk development. I think some sort of recorded deferral that contractually obligates the proponent to construct the sidewalk when the county deems necessary may be most appropriate. As it relates to the Lot Six, does Lot Six currently scheduled to have a retaining wall? And, you know, and if not, maybe does insert into that language, you know, Lot Six, or, or it'd be Lot Six and any lot requiring a design or a retaining wall?
I think that's in there.
The latter. So I don't believe Lot Six currently has plans for a retaining wall, so it would be, you could amend it to say, or modify it to say Lot Six and all resultant lots with a retaining wall to go through non-discretionary design review.
But in doing that, it doesn't change the fact that you're just checking it versus the standards?
We're checking it against, yeah, the zoning code standards and the design guidelines.
So a meaning that would not get one of, what was asked by one of the individuals in the audience to occur?
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess that's kind of where I would be at.
Okay. So we have a motion, and I haven't heard a second.
Dies without a second.
There we go. So that motion dies. Your motioning is with a amended, the condition granting a deferral.
On there, with the understanding that, on the condition that it'd be recorded.
Right. I actually kind of, I understood your motion to mean the same thing.
Same thing.
That instead of requiring Class A-
Yep.
-frontage right now, there's only a requirement to enter into a deferred street frontage improvement agreement with the county.
Which is what the county does a lot, you just said.
Yeah, we normally do it, we do, with just building permits, but we can do it at this stage, too.
And then to amend Condition Eight-
Eight.
-to read Lot Six and any lot requiring a retaining wall.
Stupid question, but can we just require all of them to have a retaining wall? That covers one to time.
What if they don't need a retaining wall?
They may not need it.
What if they don't need one?
Well, I, so I do want to be clear on what, and I don't have the language of Condition Eight, I don't think, right in front of me, but we want to be clear on what it is, are you requiring a retaining wall for Lot Six, or are you saying that you want it to be subject to the non-discretionary process?
Right.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes, I understand it as Lot Six and any resultant parcels that require a retaining wall. So like Lot Six is automatically requiring and being subject to non-discretionary design review in addition to any lots requiring a retaining wall, is my understanding of what you wanted.
Yes, correct.
With the end goal of trying to figure out if, if a retaining wall should be required on Lot Six, is that what?
You're saying Lot Six should just happen, not just-
Yes.
Well, I guess I understood it, that staff would be processing the, those, those applications differently for the construction. Is there, are they under the exact same development standards then for review? Is there any other lot?
Nothing changes, right? You do the review against the standards?
Correct. Yes.
So-
Right. With or without non-discretionary design review, we're reviewing against the applicable development standards and design guidelines.
Okay. So that maybe doesn't do anything.
So my thought, for what it's worth, is that perhaps we allow additional time for staff and the parties to get together and reschedule, pull this, withdraw this, and reschedule it for a future hearing, hopefully with the end goal of addressing the neighbor's concerns and ironing out any and all requested amendments by the applicant.
So just so, Chairman, just so I can ask some questions based on what you just described, if we send it back for staff to look at it again?
We'd set a date.
I understand that part. What would staff do any differently than what they've already done? They have gone through their review process, talked to all the individuals, the recommendation was made by, I forget the definition, to have the Schedule A sidewalks, right?
Yeah, I don't think the sidewalks was the big issue anymore.
Yeah, I don't think that's the-
I think it's, there were issues raised by the neighbor about grade and drainage, and actually, it was actually not entirely, I don't know if it was defined, every single issue. He just kind of said that there are issues that he wants to have, he wants to discuss after this proceeding. So your decision now is, do you want to have all those issues, you know, talked about here? Because they really can't be discussed at great length after this. At least there, there's a limitation to what staff can do.
So the, and with respect, Commissioner, what I heard was, was a, a, a neighbor who was frustrated with the process and unable to surface a plurality of their concerns and issues, which there were a multitude of, that wasn't enough time tonight to present them. And he had exhibits, he had other issues to surface that I heard didn't, he wasn't afforded those opportunities, those checkpoints, whether he missed those opportunities or not. And my suggestion is to, in hopes, because I'm, I want to avoid the Hatfield versus McCoy scenario here between the two neighbors, and that cooler heads, give it a pause, hopefully cooler heads will prevail and work with staff and try to mitigate some of these concerns. Maybe they won't. And, and if that were to, if that additional time would to address those concerns, bring it back to this commission, and we could hear the application one more time with hopes of the neighbor getting what issues they needed addressed with the applicant, maybe not, but we would at least give that, that proper venue for them.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood what he, what they said. I was under the impression that they, they had spoke about this at the CPAC, and those issues were brought up at the CPAC. The issues were brought up with the applicant, and there was, I guess, not a meeting of the minds then. My concern would be sending it back for meeting of the minds six months from now, or however long it would take to get back through the process.
I wouldn't recommend, recommend that.
Huh?
I, I mean, I, I just think, you know, if you want to hear these issues with, for the planning commission, a continuance of a couple of weeks, a month, max.
So you can set the how long time period?
Come back. He submitted a letter. I mean, his issues are summarized in the letter, dated today, but there's a letter. Come back, and it's a little bit of micromanaging, but you can certainly do that.
So we can set a timeframe to bring it back?
Absolutely.
Not just until whenever it gets back into the queue?
No, no, I, I agree with you that it's probably not going to get far, having the neighbors talk to each other. And we already heard, there's, you know, issues with cutting down trees and whatnot. What I'm recommend, well, what I'm saying you can do is almost workshop it here. You could do it right now, and we're still, the hearing's not over yet. But you can continue the item and bring it back for, to develop the issues a little bit more if you wanted to, but-
So if we can bring it back in a period, time period that we define, not a time period to get stuck into the normal bureaucratic process that may take six months to a year to get back around?
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
Okay. I, I'm perfectly okay with continuing as long as we put a timeframe when it comes back.
Can I ask Tom to come back? Is that possible?
Jim?
I just have a question-
Yep.
-for the, for the neighbor.
Just a, just one quick question, sir. Just to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding correctly, the letter that we receive right now is, is a family that lives in Eighty-Eight, Twenty-Three Villa Campaway. I believe the gentleman that spoke in the public is in a different address. So it's not just one person that we're talking about, it's two properties that are south of Lot Six. Just to make sure that, that I'm understanding correctly. I believe he had a different-
I see two.
Yeah, he had a different address. Okay. Thank you, sir. Sorry, Commissioner. I cut you off.
No, no, you're good. I, I guess, if, if I may ask a question of the, the neighbor, Tom, who was up here before.
Up to the chair.
Would that be, thank you. You know, kind of reading through the letter and hearing everything, I guess I'm, I guess what I'm wondering in my head is, is the real issue the massing in line of sight? Is this about a two-story building? I mean, I think our county staff does a great job resolving, you know, all, every issue, but particularly when it comes to like traffic and drainage, like that stuff as a planning commissioner, like I give great concern to, but like, I don't worry about, because I, I believe that they're going to solve that. Like, the massing issue, that's not something that they can solve because that's a subjective, you know, feeling or opinion of, of yours. And so I guess, is, is what we're, that's my question, is, is it really the massing, the kind of the proximity of a potential two-story home to, to your lot? Is that what this kind of really boils down to? Assuming that the drainage issue is fixed and-
If I understand, if I understand the question, I, I'm just, I've, I've looked at lots in the area that are that configuration. I just don't see how you're going to be able to build a, a home properly, even within the setbacks that are allowed, a large home. So there's going to have to be some compromise in either the size of the home, the one or two stories of the home, or the configuration. And that's the discussion that I was hoping to have with them, but we never got to that point. So now we're pretty much where we were back at the Fair Oaks CPAC when I brought this issue up. That was over a year ago, and I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything. I have tried to contact the engineer unsuccessfully. So, you know, that, the question of, I'm not sure I understand completely what you mean by massing. I, I, massing in, in, in some people's, it's a, it's kind of an interpretive type of a, a statement, whether the mass is too big for the property is, is the, is that the question? I mean, I, we can, we can work on trying to minimize some of the things, some of the issues. I don't know if you can ever minimize mass. If you're going to build a large home, a two-story, on a higher elevation than the adjacent property, you can't, you can't do anything- can't, you can't do anything with that mass. That, that's just going to be there, yes or no?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I, I would, I would support the, the Chair's motion to continue. I have one kind of, kind of, I guess, concern is, I think we're going to end up right back here.
That is a concern. Very valid one.
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said, my concern is that we're going to end up right back here.
Exactly.
Exactly. So, you know, and, and, you know, my understanding is like, you know, things with generally the size of buildings can be addressed through setbacks, so the building appears smaller and things like that. You know, in this scenario, if we increase the setback, you know, the, the footprint probably, no doubt, has to get smaller, the rear setback, which is going to most likely, I would assume, necessitate, all but necessitate the construction of a two-story home, because now the footprint is, is, is smaller. And so...
Just for clarification, can I ask a question?
Could I propose something that I think could probably solve this?
Let me ask one quick question. In terms of what we can do.
Chef, you just hold on for one second. Yes.
Can we put a restriction on that particular lot, saying it can only be a single-story home? Can we do that?
Yes, you can.
You can do that. So, would that solve the issue?
What I, so, what I, the corollary I always add to that is just to keep in mind that every existing one-story house in the county right now has the ability to go up another story by right.
Administratively.
Yeah. So, you'd be telling this one lot that you cannot do that. Every single one of these lots has a house behind it.
I understand. I just was curious whether that was something the commission could impose.
Usually on visual impact kind of issues like that, we, well, another option, I'll say, is, you know, screening type of mitigation. Trees, that's typical kind of mitigation for, for aesthetic. If, to the extent there is going to be a visual impact here or privacy concern, trees is the usual way that...
Yeah. The applicant, you, you chomping at the bit here to jump in here. So, what would you like to provide us with?
Yeah, I think that counsel basically kind of hit it right on the, on the spot. It's basically that, I think that Tom is concerned about privacy and the way to solve. And typically, these issues are solved, it's like with planning of trees. This matter is a private matter, I feel like, and it's like trying to resolve it, you know, and go between the, the neighbors and whatnot. We're going to use best practices to basically be able to work and be friendly with the neighbors to be able to do this. Fair Oaks is an area where typically people do like single-story homes. This lot is going to be a little bit challenging to, to do that, but we're going to do, you know, whatever we can in, in terms of providing privacy, even if the, you know, two-story home is built, you know, not putting windows so that it's not looking into direct private areas, putting trees and whatnot. But I feel like this is, this is kind of a, a private matter, and it's just going to, we're going to keep on going in circles. I don't think that there's...
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, there are some unique nuances here. I guess my rule of thumb, or at least my thought, is if we're going to explore having a screen of trees or some sort of landscaping applied to one parcel, it should be applied equitably and uniformly across the perimeter.
That property.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. That would be my preference.
So, where, where are we at here? Are we going to postpone it for 30 days?
Well, I, I had, so I, I'm in hopes of trying to mitigate some of the concerns of the residents that have voiced them, specific concerns about line of sight. It sounds like some of the drainage issues can be addressed. Looks like, well, there'll be regular maintenance to address those that have been highlighted in the, in the public comments and the letters. If we are amending the condition to granting a deferral for the sidewalk, it sounds like that issue's not, not a contentious one. And then to, as a condition, have shade or screen trees, line the perimeter where feasible, I think. I'm, I'm not there at the site. I don't know if there are structural issues or topographical, concrete, I just don't know. But where, where we can at least apply some landscaping good standards of, of screening trees through the perimeter, of the perimeter of the, the plan, I'm hoping that would be helpful for, for the, for some of the neighbors who live nearby with their line of sight.
So is that something you would like to see in a motion to do?
Mr. Chair, may I, just quickly?
Sure.
You've got a mitigation that would normally work, and I would be in favor of that, but you also have now a drainage requirement where you have a swell against the property line that's five feet wide at a minimum.
Yeah.
You can't plant any trees in that. That's a concern that, that's going to actually be a hindrance to the, the drainage mitigation. So, you know, I mean, it's a tough site. I agree with it, that, and, and I'm more than happy to, to work with the applicant. I just haven't really had the opportunity, to be honest.
So, back to my question, is that kind of a motion you were looking for?
Well, it sounds like we have a, a neighbor who's wanting to work with the applicant. So, I guess my motion would be then for, for amending with the condition of granting a deferral for the deferred improvement for the front sidewalk. And then also for the perimeter of the plan to have screening and shade.
Where, where feasible and needed, perhaps? I mean, I know...
So, since the Chair can't make that motion, I, I can make it for him if that's what he...
I, I just, yeah.
Okay. I'll second your motion.
Quick question before we vote. Does that, so now we, we learn about, okay, this is why it's very difficult for us to adjudicate projects right on the dais, y'all. And this is where I, respectfully, for both applicants and, and the neighbors, you know, we've had multiple iterations, opportunities. You have CPAC, you have the public engagement, and it's been a year. And I definitely do understand that resources from both sides, your time is crucial, your engineering time's crucial, all the invoices there. And I, and I'm not an opponent to moving this forward. And to Director Smith's point, I understand that the county supervisors have directed us to remove as much barriers to, to housing. But right now, we're, we're literally making changes right at the dais, whether or not, and I, I don't know if I'm comfortable making that change, because now there's a, there's a, there's a question being brought up, whether or not trees and that five-foot setback would be applicable. And so, I'm not too sure if we have all of our technical expertise and resources right in this room to say one way or another. And it's, it, I, I don't know as a commission right now if I'll be comfortable, you know, voting that. That's why I think that, you know, if, if both sides is, is open to having a set timeline for this to come back, given that they would probably have the opportunity to, to reengage, because then now both sides kind of have shown their cards. And then if there's still, you know, concern, that's whether or not they didn't have the opportunity to engage during the set time, then at least we've afforded them that opportunity. So, that's just my two cents.
Don't we have a motion we got to get through?
So, the Chair needs to, we need to figure out if we're going to vote on the motion or hear the, hear the applicant more?
If I may ask a question of staff prior to a vote?
Please.
Under the, the motion as, as proposed for the requirement for the screening trees, does, does staff have the ability to make those determinations of, okay, here's where all the places that screening trees are feasible, provided that, you know, obviously we can't plant them here because of drainage, or whatever the reasons. I mean, staff has the ability to make the determination of like, here and where are screening trees appropriate and viable? I mean, we can't plant a tree where it's going to, you know, wash out or die.
Yeah. Part of our nondiscretionary design review does include review by our landscape architect, who is qualified to identify where those types of screening trees would be applicable. I did also want to point out that part of the nondiscretionary design review also includes our design review administrator confirming substantial compliance with our design guidelines. And I do have them pulled up, and I just wanted to mention a couple. One is significant grade changes between lots should be gradually stepped or terraced in order to preserve natural topography to keep with community character. There's also another one about building scale and massing. And that one states that, basically, if you have a two-story home being put next to a single-story home, that there is privacy considerations taken into place. Yeah, it should respect the privacy of adjacent one-story buildings. So, our design guidelines are in place in order for our staff to provide recommendations to the design of the home as well, to make sure that it is, you know, being, is going to be compatible with the surrounding area and with existing, existing buildings in place. I will say at the staff level, it is difficult, right? Because it is staff level, it's not discretionary. So, it would be up to staff's discretion to discuss that and to kind of push that with the applicant team as much as we can.
I, I think with, with that, I would be comfortable supporting the Chair's motion.
We got to vote, I guess, yet.
All right. So, I believe we have a motion in a second. The motion was made by Chair and seconded by Commissioner Devlin.
Verga, thank you.
Okay.
Do you mind just repeating that motion again? I'm so sorry. There's just a lot of conversation in the room. And I believe, and I, respectfully, Chair Conklin...
And if it fails, then obviously...
Yeah. And, and during our discussion and during the questioning, I believe both sides were also raising their hands because they wanted to have another comment. So again, it's up to you, Chair Conklin, if you'd like to welcome them again back to the, back to the, back to the desk, back to the microphone here, or whether or not we vote on the motion. Again, I'm not trying to be, not trying to stay there and not complete this this evening, but I just want to make sure that we have all of our information here before we make a decision.
Sure. No, I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that we're respectful to the applicant and to those that have worked so hard in, in this proposal. If there's, I'm, I'm more than happy if, to hear both the applicant and the neighbor, if they would like to provide two more minutes of each, some thoughts and feedback to what's being discussed here.
When I spoke, thank you for this opportunity to, I'm sorry this is taking up so much of your time, but it means a lot to me. When I spoke at the Fair Oaks CPAC, and we came to, part of the motion to approve the recommendation to move forward was to get a discussion going, I was basically interested in seeing what they could build on that property. And since we did not have contact with the applicant or his engineer, I went out on my own, being an engineer myself, and tried to figure out just what a prop, what a house, how big of a house you could build on that lot and still keep it off the 25-foot line, the rear property line, or rear setback line, and then if it had to be two stories. And I couldn't find one. So I, what I'd just like to do is sit down with the engineer, which I thought we were going to do, and, and brainstorm what that house would look like. It may be perfectly okay. I don't know that, though. He has the information that I don't. He's privy to the elevations, he's privy to how big of a house the, the applicant is wanting to, to put on that property, how big of a house is possible. And I think that's just a way to start the conversation, to make me feel more at home, more at ease. And I might be. I can't, I can't say, because I don't have the information. So, that's why I'm here today, is because we never had that discussion. So, I think it's reasonable to think that we could come to a, an amicable solution here, that I, I'm not, I'm not expecting this lot, this subdivision to change. I'm not asking you guys to re-lot the subdivision or him to re-lot, change the, the parcel lines. I'm just asking for a little bit more information to see what is going to be on that property, because my engineering experience tells me it's going to be a tough piece of property to build on. And I don't want our privacy to be compromised by somebody who has to build out further than would normally be expected. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm, I'm likely going to be the builder on these properties. I've built many homes in Fair Oaks. We build beautiful homes. We typically, again, try to build single-story homes. This is going to be a tough lot, but I think there's quite a bit of county mechanisms in place for design review to protect privacy from individuals and whatnot. Here, we are going to have a tree canopy replacement that's going to need to be done for non-native trees. And on our part, we're going to do our best to communicate with Tom in terms of providing privacy, as well as design review. We'll review the plans as well. We don't have the plans designed. This engineer is a civil engineer. He doesn't do architectural designs. We don't know yet. We're not at that stage yet. But once we get there, I think there's enough mechanisms in place from the county building department side, as well as on our part. We typically, you know, when I build, I want happy neighbors. I totally understand where we're going into an area. He's been looking at an open field that's, you know, beautiful and whatnot. He wants to protect that. We're going to do our best to do that. That's all I can kind of say. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Well, I am happy to hear a GC wanting to work with the neighbors and, and address some of those anxieties and concerns. Obviously, we don't have renditions. We don't have, that's not what we're reviewing right now. We're reviewing a redevelopment plan and, and have limited information of, before us. So with that, I'm going to defer back to my original motion. Yeah.
Commissioner Borja had a good question about restating the motion, just to make sure we're all clear.
Oh, that was me. It would be...
Just the, I mean, just the condition that is now, though.
That question you mean?
So, in addition to amending the condition of granting a deferral, there'd also be the, of, the inclusion of screen, shade, privacy landscaping. I don't know the correct terms.
Okay. That's why I thought I heard you say, but I heard Commissioner Devlin, even though you didn't second it, but I heard you say where feasible, and I didn't hear either of the, you making the motion, you seconding. Do we, should that, is that implied in your motion?
I, I believe my first comments did include where feasible, because I was concerned about concrete and structures or things I'm not able to see from here that might be there that would prevent a tree to be planted there. I'm going to leave it to the experts, to the arborists and landscape engineers. So, where feasible.
And that's what I understood when I seconded.
Okay. And that applies to the entire perimeter of every lot of the subdivision?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
That way, every resident, every parcel owner enjoys the, the benefit of some protections from line of sight.
I'll call the vote. Okay.
You guys okay?
Member Devlin?
Yes.
Member Verga?
I...
Member Borja?
Yes.
Chair Conklin?
Yes.
That vote passes.
All right.
Thank you all. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I believe that takes us to our next item on our agenda. Clerk, will you please call item number seven?
Item number seven is PLMP 2023-00241. Item number seven is PLMP 2023-00241. It's a use permit, a development plan review, special development permit, and design review. It is located at 7895 Stockton Boulevard, approximately 400 feet south of Victory Avenue in the South Sacramento community, and the environmental document is exempt.
All right, and I have a question for the clerk. Does the overhead work today? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Nate Dobrik with Planning and Environmental Review. We've heard a lot about sidewalks, appropriate development standards, and neighborhood compatibility, and that is apropos because that is exactly what this project is about as well. Project is PLMP 2023-241, the Waterfly Express Car Wash. We are at 7895 Stockton Boulevard. We're now in South Sacramento community, about 450 feet south of Victory Avenue. I'm going to highlight here on the screen Victory Avenue is shown, excuse me, going too high here, this road right here. And this is important because there is a Victory Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area. And I'm going to read from you. "The purpose and intent briefly of the Victory Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area is to provide for a suitable use of the property while giving adequate protection and preserving low-density residential uses from adverse and incompatible impacts of existing and proposed heavy and light commercial uses." So it's all about that buffer zone between there. And the reason we're here today, that the planning commission being the decider, is that it has, does have, like most of our neighborhood preservation areas, a development plan review, which is a comprehensive review of the entire site. And the final sentence is, "The planning commission shall not approve development plans under provisions of this section," that is the neighborhood preservation area, "unless it first finds that the proposed development will not create adverse noise, visual, air quality, health, or safety impacts on abutting residential uses." So the project you're going to see today is the result of numerous iterations that planning staff has worked out with the applicant, I think seven submittals to tweak it to get to this point. I want to show briefly the neighborhood preservation area. If you could just scan that to include that in the record. And then lastly, I'll substitute this. Outline there in blue, it's a little easier to see than the subsequent slides, is the neighborhood preservation area. So you can see the residential areas. It doesn't work when it's on the overhead. My apologies. You have to use your hand. Over here is all of our residential, and then the area along Stockton is our commercial areas. All right, we'll go back to the slideshow, please. Thank you. Importantly for this project is the property to the north here, we're going to be looking at in a moment, it's going to be the Valero Truck Stop. The entire properties along Stockton Boulevard, as you might imagine, has a commercial zoning designation. To the south, we have the big shopping center, grocery outlet, Taj Market, and then the Costco down there. This property is the, one we're looking at, was the original Perrys that was built in the 60s, had a nice 51-year run, went out of business in 2019. This is the Valero Sac Valley Truck Stop right there, and then the Victory Avenue along the way, and then the City of Sacramento right across the street on the other side of Stockton Boulevard. The site itself is that original Perrys, and this is an important slide to look at because a couple of things are going to be changing. Number one, the sign would be retained in place. That pole sign that you can see, it says coffee shop, would be repurposed to match the existing, or purpose can be proposed, business. And then the entire site would be scraped and graded and rebuilt. The entitlement request is a use permit for the new car wash and vacuum facility within the neighborhood preservation area for all those reasons articulated already, the development plan review. And then importantly, when we see this irregular site, there are two deviation requests, and they're completely voluntary. They have to do with one sign that is a foot and a half taller than required and stands proud of the building. Surprisingly, the applicants were able to meet all of our other approved development standards on this very irregular site, and then lastly, design review. The site itself would look something like this. This is a schematic layout. Couple of important things to note. The existing driveway, which is shared, it's about double this length. This is the shared access with the Valero Truck Stop, so that would continue to be the one in and out of this site. This one at the south here is a rolling gate designed for emergency vehicle only, and then a tremendously long queuing area that was important for DOT's purposes to ensure that cars aren't stacking up on Stockton Boulevard. And then entering through the backside, exiting through the front, and then a series of vacuums and trash enclosure, which is easy access from the front there. Landscaping would add a considerable number of new trees, much more than currently exists on the site. Another important consideration was that this entire area is within the floodplain for Union House Creek. So the applicants worked very carefully not to change any of the overall grade elevation so that they could maintain, going through more complicated flood control requirements. Additionally, this fencing around there has to remain permeable in case there is a flood. So it'd be a chain link or some equivalent. I'm going to let the applicant team, they flew a long way to be here today, speak more about the architectural design features, but we have the, in the upper right corner, this would be what would be facing Stockton Boulevard. Importantly, though, between Stockton Boulevard and that elevation is a low wall and lots of landscaping. So you're not going to be looking straight into the tunnel because that is one of our code requirements that is met. This would be the entryway from the long queuing lane to the back. This is the north elevation, as if you were driving northward on Stockton Boulevard. And this sign, which stands proud, is the special development permit request. It's, the neighborhood preservation area does limit, and then our, excuse me, our zoning code limits those signs to be four feet. In this case, it wants to be five and a half, and it's supposed to not go above the building. In this case, we have provisions that the ends of the building, the towers, are 30 feet. Now, the neighborhood preservation area caps it at 20, but the zoning code allows certain portions of buildings that have purpose and function, like church steeples with bells or things like that. In this case, the blowers, motors, and whatnot, and these tunnels have to be elevated above the machinery. So the tunnels get to be 30. The main building has to stay at 20 in compliance with the neighborhood preservation area because there's no functional component up top. And then the deviation request is that proud sign. The sign itself would be repainted white. That is also a requirement of the special sign district. It has to be architecturally integrated within the overall development. It's a fairly minimalist design, and so the only change to the sign proposal besides the face copy to match the new proposed car wash logo would be to paint it white to match the building. I'll let, again, let the architect team speak more about the overall architectural features. This would be a illustration, as if you were in the site already, looking at your various vacuum stations under this solid blue canopy. Then the next would be the nighttime rendering, looking at the, from this, looking north, say, from Stockton or when you're just on the site. There are 76 conditions of approval for this project, and one of them does limit the operation hours between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The applicant can speak to their own operating time. And then, in the evening, one of the neighborhood preservation area considerations is that all lights would be turned off. There'd be no business illumination in the non-operating hours between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So did go to two advisory committees. The DRAC did vote three yes on this project. They were very favorable overall. They felt that it was durable materials. They liked the modern design, the lack of garish colors. They felt it was a big improvement on the property. And at South Sacramento, also endorsed the project with a four yes, zero no. They did question the viability of yet another car wash in the area. There seems to be quite a few, and the applicant can speak to their impressions on that. Overall, it is consistent with the Victory Avenue Neighborhood Preservation Area. It is about 350 feet to the very closest property edge of residential zoning. We did assess the noise standards. If you think about a normal conversational decibel level at 60, this is about 60 decibels, believe it or not, the car washer would operate at about 100. Remember, every 10 decibels is double the volume. And so at that distance, we would anticipate the sound from the car wash to drop down to the high 40s, 48 or so. So it would be a significant decrease, which is below the county's noise threshold for residential. Granted, the winds do carry that way, but the overall sound being, there are sound dampeners that are also required to be placed on the inside of the tunnel. Again, met all of our development requirements, even with that irregular lot shape, and it is categorically exempt from CEQA as an infill project. So we do recommend approval of this project, that the planning commission does find the project exempt under the CEQA Section 15303, that approve the use permit subject to the 76, those are the required, excuse me, those are the required conditions, which are the 76, there's several advisory pass that, subject to the findings and conditions of attachment to. The special development permit to allow the larger and sign to go above the tunnel of the car wash. Approve the overall development plan review, and find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. Again, we have Joe Bermudas and Trevor White, the applicant and agent. They flew a long way to be here, and I'd like to give them an opportunity, but I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Nate. Any questions from the DIES for staff? All right, thank you. At this time, we'll bring up the applicants. And where did we fly in from?
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Joe Bermudas. I'm the applicant. Flew in from Chicago this morning.
All right.
Happy to be here.
Welcome.
Lovely weather, by the way. Much, much nicer than where I come from. Joining me is the owner of Waterfly, Trevor Knight. Basically, as Nate mentioned, we've been at seven or eight iterations of this site, the building design. We've collaborated with the Design Review Advisory Committee, with planning, and we feel that we're bringing a major upgrade to this lot and what's there today. So we're just really looking forward to bringing this project to life. We've been working on it for almost two years through the design process, and now we're getting into the point of we have construction drawings in process, in review actually, in conjunction with this hearing. So we're hoping to get your approval today so we can continue with our process as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
And do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll defer to the clerk for any online comments.
And I have no online comments.
All right. Well, we'll kick it to the commission.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Big fan of original Perrys, sad to see it go, but I also use that Costco a lot, so I really appreciate you guys looking into, you know, potentially having an infill development and really not just beautifying the space, but using the space because right now it's unfortunately being used for, for other negative purposes. Let's just say it that way. It is quite interesting. It's next to a creek, so it's next to a waterway. Can you guys just speak a little bit about your mechanisms of protecting to make sure that any potential hazardous chemicals that are used in your business do not seep in to, to that waterway? And what are your, like, kind of mitigation measures, or what are your protective measures to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Yes, of course. So the, the tunnel itself houses all of the water and chemicals, and it's pitched and graded in a way so all those, all the water from the cars is blown off into a ditch, which is then goes through a whole treatment system before it goes into the sewer. The site itself on the back end towards the creek is all, I believe, graded going the other way to a stormwater system that we've worked with the Department of Water Resources in designing. Again, a lot of time has went into the design to ensure that, you know, that stormwater, you know, doesn't spill out into the creek, but rather stays within the site and flows where it needs to go. Anything in the building itself, though, does go into a pit within the tunnel, and then it goes through a whole treatment system. And we actually try to reutilize that water, recycle that water as much as we physically can.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, I just want to applaud you for your efforts. I have read through the analysis and saw that, that, that is such a unique property and, and one that presents several challenges and looks like there's a lot of work involved in developing a plan that would fit right with not only the community, but create some economic development and kind of rejuvenate that area. And I know there was some major expenses noted by the property owner to abate homelessness and crime and graffiti and a whole bunch of ills to that, that kind of, that, that area. I see that the proposed deviation for the oversized sign above the, the car wash tunnel is, doesn't have any bearing on necessary infrastructure. It's more aesthetics, and I appreciate the, the staff's presentation on it and, and happy to make a motion. Any other comments?
Sorry, assuming that your motion is for the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, correct.
Happy to second it. Thank you.
Yes. It's late in the evening, haven't had my cup of coffee. So, yes, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Members Devlin?
Yes.
Verga?
Aye.
Borja?
Yes.
And Chair Conklin?
Yes.
That vote passes.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. And I think that brings us to the directors, or I'm sorry, the planning directors' report.
Yes, thank you, Chair Conklin. A few announcements for this report tonight. First, a couple of staffing updates for you. There's a lady, yep, she's still there, good. Kimber Gutierrez has been promoted to the principal planner in our current planning group. So congratulations, Kimber. You've seen her around here quite a bit. She'll stay around here quite a bit. Another one I want to announce, Jessie Shen, who, I think she was last year when we did the countywide rezone program. She has also been promoted into a role of the infill coordinator. Some of you maybe have been tracking that one for a while. It is now filled as of a week ago. So you'll see a lot more of her, and you'll continue to see Kimber. Second thing I want to cover just briefly, I know you all have busy lives. It's also important for us as staff that we're keeping the business flowing here at the county, and the planning commission is obviously a part of that. We want to make sure our projects move forward timely. We understand there are certain circumstances where folks might be absent unexpectedly. Totally get all that. Please let us know, including clerk of the board staff, if you know you're going to be absent. That way we can plan accordingly, let our applicants know what to expect. There are circumstances sometimes where when you have just four commissioners, it can get a little interesting. And so we have to let our applicants know when, when that's happening. So just please continue to coordinate with us and the clerk of the board staff on any expected absences. The last thing I want to mention, we are countywide going through a big website overhaul, but there will be some interim changes to the planning commission website. I know a number of you have communicated to me some concerns about, you know, how folks are contacting you with questions and that sort of thing. I am going to be working with our DTEC, Department of Technology, staff to update the planning commission website to ensure your preferred contact information is up there. And I don't mean phone numbers, I just mean your preferred email address. I was trying to figure out a way to get county emails for you, even though you're not county staff. That's proving to be much more complicated than was anticipated. So if you have any concerns about that, by all means, let me know, but that's what I'm planning to do. Hopefully that can then give interested parties a way to cleanly and seamlessly know how to get ahold of you rather than, you know, fielding phone calls or emails at your day jobs if you have a day job. I know Commissioner Verga does not, but good for him. I know that's an issue for the rest of you. So that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you very much.
There was one thing that I talked to the chairman about when we went through the training in the academy, and it was highly suggested that commissioners have basically a city or county email for the purposes of litigation issues and discovery.
Right.
Versus, you know, when you get, I've gone through that process numerous times, and discovery and your personal emails and your personal information is a whole lot different than discovery when you're in a organization of city, county, state.
Correct.
So they brought it up during that training, and I did mention it to the chairman. I was just curious if, based on what you just said, whether or not county emails are pretty much a no-starter.
It has taken much longer than I thought it would. I finally heard late last week that there are, I think, three different forms that I need to send to each one of you to get filled out. You have to have, what's it called? Multi-factor authentication to sign in, et cetera. It's not a non-starter. It is possible. It's just taking a lot longer than I thought it would.
I think at this point, what we're trying to do is just get a splash page or some sort of section on the... sort of section on the planning committee, the Sacramento County Planning Commission's website that at least is an easy-to-direct identification of who our commissioners are and their preferred contact. If that preferred contact changes over a certain period of time, great, but.
We just update the webpage.
We just update, yeah.
Okay, so the preferred compact contact would be a county email or just an email?
Your your preferred email at this moment.
Okay.
And later this week, hopefully tomorrow, I'll be sending out those three forms. Should you wish to have a county email, we can do it. Just know that it comes with some paperwork.
It's a paperwork, unfortunately.
All right. Are there any miscellaneous scheduling items?
I have none.
Do we have folks absent?
I have two.
Yep.
The month of August, I have my last doctrinal law school class, which has been moved to Monday night. So I will be absent July 7th through August 7th, any meeting in between those two dates.
And I will be unavailable on the 23rd of this month.
All right, we have some.
One last, but not really a scheduling matter, but the July, excuse me, June 23rd hearing, although there's only, I think, three items, I would expect a lengthy one.
Yeah. I anticipate a lot of, a lot of attendees and a lot of comments.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to public comments.
And we have no public comments.
All right. With that, we will adjourn at 7:42.